Thank you, Brian. You're still getting used to the technology, so forgive me. Slightly unnerving that I can see what I'm seeing in no video and I'm not sure if you can see me. So bear with me, we are getting used to it. But yeah, we are the health improvement team from Public Health at Leicestershire County Council. I'm Colm Meeley. And for the start of the session, I'll be running through a bit of introduction about the team and then we'll slowly go into some of our focus areas and you'll see how the team works and sort of why it works and the way it does. So I think what we want to do, just to make it a bit more sort of lighthearted, I know there's a few of you on the call, but just want to do a bit of an intro, just to see how you're feeling today. I think Mel came up with this idea, so I'll let Mel take the credit for this. We're hoping, not that I can see the chat anyway, so people have to let me know. If you're just dropping the chat, how are you feeling today, just to sort of have that bit of a discussion, that would be great. And I will try and put something myself, if I can work out how to use the chat whilst presenting. I'm not the only one that's feeling tired then, as I think there's a few of you. Productive, positive, hopeful. Alright. Rushed, Joe. Tired, yes. I think it has been a long year for us all, but it's good to see that lots of people there still feeling positive, energised even, Mel. But yeah, for me, I'm feeling quite tired this morning. I've got an 18-month-old boy who's keeping me up all night. So I'll be very grateful for when he goes back to sleep properly. Right, we'll move on then and start the session. Okay, so what we thought we'd do is just to give an overview of the department itself, look at the sort of reasons and for why we do what we do, and then we'll go into more of the specifics of our programme delivery. So the primary aim for any public health department is to protect people from infection, disease, morbidity and early mortality, and to improve the health and wellbeing of people at a populational level, so this is across LLR when we're working in partnership. The work we carry out is always in consideration of health inequalities. These are unfair but entirely avoidable health differences in a given population, and they're often caused by low income, poor education and unemployment. As a department, we do have some statutory responsibilities that we have to deliver. The council has these statutory responsibilities for public health services, which are set out by the Health and Social Care Act 2012, which sets out the duty to improve and protect public health. Just this person. The council must take such steps to improve the health of people tackling the priorities for health in our local area. And the in-house delivery, we deliver a mixture of in-house services or programmes. So for example, the smoking cessation or weight management services, but also a range of commissioned services, so things like substance misuse from turning point, and then the sexual health services, to name but a few. Within that department, we have our public health teams. This is myself, Shirag and Mel. We also have now a senior health improvement officers, which may not have met, and they're quite new to the team. And then we have the health improvement manager, which leads the team. So what we do, the department's strategic aims are often directed by national policy and guidance. So for example, some of the work that I do, in 2017, the government announced a plan to establish suicide prevention groups in all local authority areas, and these groups should oversee and deliver a localised suicide prevention strategy. So that's really the example how something comes from nationally, our team would then be responsible for developing and maintaining that work. The work of the wider public health department and their own team is guided by the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment. You're probably more familiar with the Leicestershire JSNA. This is a strategic assessment that analyses the health needs of a population, and it's in response to recently identified unmet needle gap in self-revision as a lack of expertise and capacity within schools to support children of safe harm. So when we identify the needs, we put programmes in place or products in place. So one of them that we have done to address that is to support staff in school. We procured a range of training for teachers, pastoral staff and the wider school network to attend self-harm awareness and prevention training. The training was designed to encourage effective communication, signposting, and most importantly, that early intervention that we tend to focus on. Each of us, the health improvement officers, have lead areas of work. So for example, mine is suicide prevention, mental health across all ages. However, we do support the delivery of larger schemes of work, so this might be the Healthy Schools or Healthy Tops programmes, and both of which are currently being redesigned, and we're hoping that they'll be ready for a relaunch in March 2021. So that's just an example of how we have our own specific areas, but also we do work together to lead bigger programmes. Then the smaller projects, such as targeted campaigns and promotions, we'll talk about those a bit later in the presentation. So the public health directory, which you may have seen, you may not have, we generally review this every 12 to 18 months, we try to at least, but things do change quite quickly, so it can become outdated just because of the pace of procurement and commissioning of new services. Public health in Leicestershire generally has moved towards a social model of public health and away from that more traditional sort of lifestyle behaviour change model. So this has led to a number of services with strong emphasis on community capacity building as the, that's sort of early basis of prevention. And the directory sets out the services we commission or provide in response to these duties and in support of the council's target operating model for prevention and early help services. So really, we hope that provides an easy source of information on the service as that one-stop shop to the work of public health. So I won't say too much more about that, but at the end, we can send you that document on an email attachment for you to have a look at if you haven't seen it already. So that was a bit of a quick whistle-stop tour of just the department in general, how our team sits within that department and how we help the sort of delivery of our strategic aims as a department. Before we go on to our first sort of focus topic, does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask, they can ask in the chat or ask out loud? Just bear in mind that I can't see anything at the moment other than my full screen, so forgive me if anybody has.
Connor, it's Joe Spake, so I think he answered my question, but I was just asking if we could have a link to the directory that we could share with all participants after.
Yeah, of course. Sure, yeah, we've just updated as well. I think only a couple of months ago, we got it back from design, so that should be ready and sort of up to date. So yeah, we'll share that latest copy with everybody. If you do have any questions throughout the session, just drop them in the chat and I'll try my best to pick them up and answer them as we go along. And I appreciate not everybody wants to sort of put their mic on and talk, so we have to do that. And I think I'm going to be the host for Mel, and I'll hand over to Mel now.
Have I unmuted myself? Yeah, I have. Hi, everyone. So yeah, as Connor said, mine is Melissa Maiden, one of the newly appointed health improvement officers to the public health team. And I'm just going to go through a few slides talking about embedding behaviour change and prevention across Leicestershire, Leicester and Rutland through the provision of the healthy conversation skills, which most of you probably know as MECC, making every contact count. So MECC has been delivered across LLR actually for several years. It's been primarily delivered by the University Hospital of Leicester and the Leicestershire Partnership Trust, mainly through their staff teams, training them up to use behaviour change conversations with their patients to essentially encourage a positive lifestyle change and encourage more referrals or signposts into local services. Okay, so what is MECC? MECC is, it's a brief advice level intervention. It's about empowering staff, giving them the confidence to have conversations with individuals that enables them the ability to offer support and opportunities to benefit that person and their wellbeing, as well as that sort of support communities and also wider health and care system. It's around sort of how we interact with people and probably more around recognising the opportunities to address wellbeing. It is primarily aimed at non-specialist staff, however, nurses, doctors, you know, those individuals who are having regular conversations can still benefit from the MECC ethos. You know, as well as sort of varying organisations such as private, voluntary, you know, in the public sector. As I say, it's around equipping their staff with the skills to encourage support and signpost. It looks at a range of basic lifestyle factors such as smoking, physical inactivity, alcohol consumption, as you can see, but it primarily looks at sort of what matters to the individual instead of actually what is the matter with the individual. So as you can see, the little cartoon thing that I've put there, so it's essentially what matters to Sarah instead of individuals trying to say what is the matter with Sarah. So MECC Plus, this actually, it's an extension of the standard sort of MECC offer, but it sort of offers a little bit more of a holistic approach to supporting health and wellbeing and very much considers those wider determinants of health, you know, such as you can see from the slide, debt, money, housing, education, and then delves a little bit more deeper into a bit more like sort of around behaviour change techniques, you know, sort of setting smarter goals, things of that nature. So in terms of, so there's a number of benefits to organisations and as well as the sort of wider health system. However, it isn't without its challenges. So benefits can be in terms of, as we said, improved staff competence, improved quality of referrals or signposts into services such as stop smoking, physical activity, you know, housing. It can very much enable early intervention. You know, if something is potentially just starting, we could potentially, as we say, nip it in the bud. It can also sort of have a shared approach to health and wellbeing and prevention across a whole organisation or community, as well as that sort of, it does provide a potential cost-saving for the council and our local health economy. But as I say, there are potential challenges. Some of those can be organisational buy-in in terms of sort of people understanding, you know, senior management understanding what MECC is and how it does actually embed in their organisation. Performance and quality of like the trainers as well. Demand management in terms of sort of, and I'll come on to this slide in a little bit, and this sort of depends on the amount of trainers that are trained to actually deliver, because it is actually, it is quite, it can be quite time-consuming. And then as well as that, sort of the sustainability, and that's something that particularly across LLR we're looking at. It's not just you do the training and that's it, we do it for a short time period. You know, this is, we're hoping to embed the ethos of sort of healthy conversation skills for the longer term. Next one. So just what I wanted, again, just in the chat box, apologies, I'm not very technical with Zoom and stuff like that. Just a question for you all and just to write true or false, just on your thoughts of, you know, can everyone have a healthy conversation with those they encounter? On the ball there, Andrew, first. I should have had like little prizes for people who were first. Okay, perfect. So, yeah, most of you, most of you saying true, which is great. Doesn't mean I have to try and change anyone's minds. Next slide, if that's all right, Connor. So yeah, so true, everyone can have a healthy conversation and support and encourage behaviour change. And you don't necessarily have to work in sort of like the health or social care profession, bring in a library, office, shop, you know, even with your friends and family. You don't have to be an expert. It's not about telling people what to do, it's around assisting and signposting. It also, it's not about increasing individuals' workloads. You will have more conversations with people every single day than you actually realise. It's around kind of using those opportunities to help and support. And as well as that, it doesn't have to be a long conversation either. I've got a couple of videos which I'll show you in a few slides. You know, and not every interaction has to result in something as well. That's, you know, that's probably something that's quite important. It's more often normally about just planting a seed for someone. Next slide. So just to, just to give you a little bit of a story so far in terms of sort of like the LLR approach, we, this past year of 2019 and into 2020 before Covid hit, the focus has primarily been on local authority, UHL and LPT staff teams. And as I say, sort of at the beginning of the presentation, trying to really embed those behaviour change and prevention approaches across that workforce. We have done some face-to-face train-the-trainer training and 12 people, which includes myself, have been delivered, trained up, sorry, to deliver the MECC programme. We have also sort of developed, in response actually to obviously the current situation, an online training package. We're just putting just some final tweaks to this, but All Being Well, it will be ready for rollout the end of this month into December. We've also, again, developed a standalone website, which will host the e-learning, which I'll come on to in a second, which is all part of the online training package, as well as sort of offering other information about MECC and MECC Plus, local services, how to signpost, things like that. And certainly I can sort of share that website after this presentation, if anyone would like it. We are also investigating the use of an app that could be used across organisations to help enable sort of easier referrals and signposting into local services. And then also, it has been agreed that, obviously for obvious reasons, that it will be only virtual training until April 2021, with probably more of the priority groups that have been identified, but then also groups that have expressed a need or priority previous to Covid. So certainly, one of my roles from a Leicestershire County Council point of view is to get in touch with those organisations pre-Covid, but then also to potentially work with those organisations and individuals, departments, who would benefit from the online training package that we've developed. And as you can see, just sort of touched upon that, we're looking to put together a development plan to roll this out, particularly to LCC staff, but also wider, such as community groups and private organisations.
Mel, there's a question in the chat from Rowena. She wants to know if service users can be directly referred to you.
What do you mean by people who have expressed wanting like, say, stopping smoking and stuff like that? Or are you talking about people who are wanting training, the training?
Okay, so we work for Lamp, hello, sorry, I've appeared now. My colleague Amber, who's also here as well, we actually work for Lamp in Leicester, which is a mental health charity. So we often come across people that have wider problems going beyond, well, that affect their mental health effectively, which I'm sure you appreciate. So what I'm sort of wondering is if they need help with some of these other things, can they be referred directly to you? Are you kind of like a hub that can then, you know, source other areas?
Yeah. So essentially on the website, which I can share to you, what we've done is we've split it into sort of Leicestershire County, Leicester City and Rutland. And essentially, we are trying to direct people through, I'll call it three main doors. So for Leicestershire, so if individuals live in the county, it's through First Contact Plus. If they live in the city, it's through the Live Well or the My Choice. And then if it's Rutland, it's through the Rutland Community Wellbeing Hub. So and then from there, essentially, they should be directed into whatever services that are deemed sort of appropriate for them.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, it's just I've not heard of yourselves before, so just wonder why in all this time, you know, it's not got it through. Okay, thank you.
What we could, without me sort of like totally going off and waffling and annoying everyone, is we could sort of catch up after this and sort of chat a little bit more about it. And there's certainly definitely potentially a link with colleague Connor, who leads on the mental health for the team, so.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Well, that's all right. So I've touched on it already, but just to let you all know sort of the four types of training that we're sort of currently offering at the moment. So we've got the e-learning, which is just a 45-minute introduction to like the key messages of healthy conversations. We have the e-MEC Light, which is a three-hour training, which sort of develops a little bit, you know, further on from the e-learning and those key messages. And then we also have the MECC Healthy Conversation Skills Training, which again builds up from the e-MEC Light in terms of its two, three-hour training. And this very much looks into, as I alluded to earlier, like behaviour change, those wider determinants of health, exploring actually what a healthy conversation is. And then that leads on to All Being Well, like the Train the Trainer, which as I said, we've already trained up 12 people across LLR. And again, that's pretty much the same as the MECC Healthy Conversation Skills Training, but it just supports the individuals more around gaining those skills, being able to sort of deliver the MECC programme. So as I say, at the moment, the two that we're offering is the e-learning and the e-MEC Light. There is no, at the moment, conversations around being able to deliver, you know, number three and number four, just because they are very much, you know, face-to-face training. In terms of sort of options, particularly for LCC staff, we're looking into sort of the open access via the learning pool. And then in terms of sort of anyone else, it's really probably, and this seems really very open-ended, but, you know, we can make it quite bespoke to your department's organisation. So if people are interested, at the moment, it's around sort of getting in touch. We are, All Being Well, going to sort of have what we call a bit of a soft launch, because I'm sure that most of you will appreciate it's quite an up and down moment, time at the moment with Covid, you know, what's happening, what's not. And, you know, that is at the moment quite, there's quite focused pieces of work around that. But we're still wanting to sort of get MECC out there, because absolutely it does complement, you know, because there's people having conversations every day with people. So we're certainly happy to work with yourselves to tailor the training to meet any specific needs. Try and identify a champion to sort of help work with us and cascade messages. And potentially, who knows, when we can get back to face-to-face training, maybe able to be trained up as a MECC plus trainer. Next, cheers Connor. Okay, so before, while Connor just sort of gets us on to the next slide, the next few slides, what I wanted to do, I didn't want to just keep it death by PowerPoint. I've just got a couple of videos really, just to sort of show you, you know, just some healthy conversation scenarios. So, is it not working? I would try and reenact it, but.
Go among yourself for a moment, it'll come on. I've got the really annoying blue little circle that's whirring, saying it's loading. Good job, we've got two hours.
I did say as well, I was like, fingers crossed that technology can be kind today. Oh, I've got a black something, black box.
Must be those cheap laptops the councils have bought. Is anything coming up for anybody?
No.
No, okay, brilliant. Bryony, help?
The only thing I think is if you perhaps stop sharing and then start again, just to see if it reboots.
Okay. Like, bear with me. Right.
Let me share my screen and let's see if that works.
Go for it.
Can you see?
We can see notes at the moment.
Don't show those, because people will think that I've just, you know.
How's that? Can you see the slides?
Yeah. There we go. So, hang on, I won't show it. So, yeah, so this is, so as I said, this is just, I'm just going to show you a couple of videos. So this is one video and then I'll just ask a couple of questions and, yeah, just to give you an idea. Oh no, there's no voice. Oh no, there's no volume.
Sorry, can everyone hear that?
You might need to go into settings and click on to share audio with the computer. That's me thinking, oh, it'd be really fun showing all the videos.
Apologies for that. So sorry, Mel, it doesn't seem.
Oh, we've just talked about it a long time and.
Hi, how can I help you?
Oh, hi, I wonder if you can, I've got my shoulder.
Oh hi, I wonder if you can, um I've got my shoulder.
Sorry, apologies for that, it's um, doesn't seem to want to load.
It, it did earlier, didn't it?
Why don't you give us a gist of the video and then we can share it with everybody after and hopefully.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I was gonna say, because then we'll, we can, we can move on, it's fine, don't worry. So essentially, um this first, so this um, this first, oh actually, yeah, can you put the link in the um chat box?
I'll find it from the PowerPoint now and put it in the chat box.
There we go, so we've popped it in the chat box. Can we access it that way?
Should just be able to click on the link and that'll take them through, so.
Yeah.
Give people a few minutes perhaps and then.
Yeah. Is it working, Brown? Thanks Abby and Hannah. So I'll give you a few minutes just to watch it, because it's only um, yeah, it's only just about a minute. Okay. So all of um, all I've got now is just, it, it's just really just a couple of questions just to, and again, just in the, in, just in the chat box. Um, what risks do you think were, were identified with, with Amanda? So I'll keep going, because I know that we um, we had a little bit of an IT interlude, but yeah, so, oh, here we go. Thanks Jo. And if anyone wants to, if anyone wants to shout out, that's absolutely fine. But essentially, sort of probably the main, the main things, yeah, is that she was, she was tired, there was money worries and, you know, and also sort of he- healthy eating. Um, so in terms of then, kind of, the next question that I had was what, what did you notice about, about the conversation at all? So from, so just to sort of give you, give you a bit of an idea in terms of sort of the conversation, it's um, so the librarian, bless her, she seemed a lot more focused on getting the books back. Um, and, and, and certainly she, you know, she took Amanda to, to the section that she was after. Um, you know, and then it would just led to a very short conversation, kind of when, you know, went away and, yeah, absolutely right, Jo, and, you know, it was very, very closed. So in terms of then, this is just to sort of show you, then the next video, if um we're able just to sort of put it, yeah, there we go, it's fine, just put it in the chat. So if you take a look at this video for me. Give us a thumbs up Bryony when you've then finished watching it. Yeah. So then in terms of probably that, that, you know, this video, just again, just a couple of questions. Um, you know, what, what improvements did you notice um between, between the videos? Just so you know, this is, this is not, it's not a test or anything like that, it's just, what I've wanted to do is just kind of, just show you um just kind of two um differences between um, between the videos, and these are actually on the, on the e-learning. Um, we've got a number of, a number of um scenarios. Yeah. Yeah, so, so obviously in terms of sort of between the two videos, there was, you know, greater use of what, what we call these open discovery questions, so a bit more what, how, so it, it, you know, it leads to finding out um a bit more, a bit more information, um which, you know, which can provide a, you know, a positive action. Um, you know, of, of support, yeah, absolutely more approachable, um, you know, a bit, bit more conversation style. Um, and then just again, just what action was suggested that, that may assist in, in, in a behaviour change? So in terms of that, it's more around sort of, you know, a leaflet, a leaflet was given, and then as well as that sort of support was offered using obviously the, you know, the library com- computers. Now this, yeah, totally right, Rowena, you know, sign, signposting, so. This doesn't necessarily mean that Amanda is gonna start totally unhealthy, or she is definitely gonna come, um, you know, and, and, and use, and use the computers, but potentially it could, um, you know, it could plant a seed for her. Um, you know, it's just uh offering her something and, and getting her potentially to, to sort of think. Thanks for that guys, apologies, really, really sorry, I, you know, I saw it definitely going a lot slicker than, than that, but anyways. Um, so that's about, um, so that's about it from, from me, and I'll um pass over to my colleague, although I think actually it is, it is me, so we'd. I wanted to pass over this to, to my former colleague Bryony, who absolutely LRS smashes desk size. Um, but again, you don't have to, uh, don't have to join in, but just for about a minute, I wanted everyone, if you want to, just get off your chair and just shake, I'll do it obviously, see who's on doing it. Um, and just shake your arms, shake your arms and legs. Come on, we've been sat, sat now for a little bit and I'm sure everyone's been sort of sat. Just shake your arms, shake your legs, move around, march on, march on the spot for me. I mean, yous can do the um activities that um the Stepbrothers are, are doing. Then arms up for me, just do some arm circles. There we go, keep marching on the spot. And then go the other way. That's it, and then we'll come and sit back down and we'll, and we'll keep going. And thanks ever so much.
Good morning, everyone. I'm hoping you're feeling quite energised after Mel's activity. Um, we're, my, uh, my name is Churagin, I'm uh one of the newly recruited Health Improvement Officers at Leicestershire County Council. Uh, one of my areas of concern, or one of my priority areas is cancer. And from a public health point of view, we're going to have a quick delve into cancer prevention and, and almost recognise the importance that, what early diagnosis has, uh, and looking at it from a national and a local context as well. We know that mental health plays a critical role in people's ability to maintain good physical health and engage in health-promoting behaviours. Poor mental health is linked to other conditions, other factors such as smoking, uh, physical health conditions, drug use or alcohol misuse. And having both cancer and mental health condition is related to poorer quality of life, increased risk of death, including suicide, uh, poorer treatment adherence and outcomes, and higher healthcare costs in general. Excuse me. They're looking at um from a national standpoint, the NHS Long-Term Plan as a strong focus on the treatment and prevention of illness uh by supporting patients to adopt healthy and improved uh behaviours. And this will both help people to live longer and have healthier lifestyles. And then in terms of other strategies, you've got the uh Public Health England Strategy, who have a direct focus on having a smoke-free society, so taking steps to create a smoke-free society by twenty thirty. Uh, the definition of a smoke-free society is a population of less than five percent smoking. So we still have quite a way to go for that in Leicestershire. Another uh priority for them is healthier diet and healthier weights, um helping people make the healthier choice. When we look at the local strategies, in twenty nineteen, Leicester, Leicestershire and Rutland put together a cancer strategy for adults. And their strategic aims were four focuses. The first focus was on prevention, so reducing the number of preventable cancers by promoting and facilitating lifestyle changes and reducing inequalities, improving earlier diagnosis. Uh, improving earlier diagnosis is recognised as the single most important factor for cancer survival. But also uh ensuring access to treatment of excellence and the delivery, to deliver the personalised care agenda as well. Then finally, we have the Leicestershire Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Um, and this one's based around, and it's strategically driven by their G S and A's, which we highly alluded to, so the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment. So I'm just going to ask a question, I'm gonna ask you to put your answers in the chat box. What are your chances of being diagnosed with cancer? So do you think it's thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent or sixty percent? Jo, uh Bryony straight in there with fifty percent, Jo with forty, I can see your chats. So thank you very much for those who've contributed, I'll give you a few more seconds for those who are still making their mind up. So your chances of being diagnosed with cancer, if you're born after nineteen sixty, is one in two. So one in two of us will be diagnosed with cancer in our lifetimes. Uh, so that's fifty percent of odds and for those who are also fifty percent. It's not all bad news, so you might think, oh gosh, we're going to get diagnosed with cancer potentially. Um, life expectancy has been increasing, so that's been one of the factors for increased incidences of cancer. But although the prevalence of cancer has increased, survival has increased as well. So more importantly, in the nineteen seventies, one in four of us were surviving ten years or more. But currently, it's about fifty percent, so fifty percent of people are surviving ten years or more uh when diagnosed with cancer. But the aim is to obviously improve that, and the aim within the next decade or so is to have that at three in four people surviving the cancers ten years or more. Another quick question for you again, what is the biggest risk factor for cancer? So if you could just pop in the chat section, what you think is the biggest risk factor for cancer? Connor with obesity, smoking? All of them, but smoking the most. Thank you Connor. Again, I'll give you a few more seconds to write your answers. Excellent, okay. So the answer, I'm afraid, is age. So half of all cancers are in people aged over seventy, and that's according to CR UK. Uh, as I mentioned, life expectancy is increasing, uh and as we age, there's more time for damage in our cells to build up. Uh, and the more chance that someone of, sorry, uh, and more chance that some of this damage might eventually lead to cancer. So yeah, unfortunately, there is no cure for aging. Um, my next question to you is, which of these is not a risk factor for cancer? And again, if you could just write your answer into the chat box please. Do you think it's smoking? Do you think it's genetics? Drinking alcohol, stress, age, or being overweight or obese? So which is not a risk factor for cancer? I'll wait a few more seconds for your answers. Okay, it's stress. Um, there've been many studies to look at the effects of stress on cancer risk. Uh, stress can lead to unhealthy behaviours like smoking or drinking, but there's no good evidence to suggest that stress itself leads to cancer. One of the things that we do know is that there are a lot of myths out there, um in terms of cancer prevention and cancer risk. But what we do know and through studies is that the actual causes of cancer, so knowledge of actual causes of cancer is greater in the general public population than the mythical causes. But the awareness is generally, generally low for both types of factors. So it kind of has uh implications for uh our efforts in promoting cancer prevention in the general public. I noticed someone mentioned, uh Rowena mentioned genetics. So genetics has um about a three percent uh, uh, risk factor for cancer, so about three percent of cancers are through genetics. So yeah, so that, again, you mentioned not for breast cancer, yes, I completely agree. So this is for cancers in general, so not just one specific tumour site. So in terms of lowering your risk, can we lower our risk for cancer? So a yes or a no answer please, in the chat box? A big yes from Connor. Excellent. So according to CR UK, four in ten cancer, uh, cancer cases in England can be prevented. Um, and I want to ask the question to you, what do you think those preventable factors are? What do you think we can do to lower our risk of getting cancer? So if you could just pop your answers in the chat box please. Smoking, yeah? Excellent, so reducing alcohol intake. Healthy diet, fantastic. Increased physical activity and maintain, excellent Melissa. And Bryony, on the same wavelength. Okay, so yeah, so these are your preventable risk factors really, so your modify, modifiable risk factors and for lowering your risk. So we've obviously said not smoking, keeping a healthy weight, uh eating a balanced and healthy diet, uh staying safe in the sun, reducing your alcohol intake and increasing and maintaining physical activities, excellent work everyone. And this of, this here indicates the cancer cases really. So the larger the circle indicates the more you get cancer cases. You can see from the bottom, you've got you're minimising your H R T use. And then moving up from there, you've got your healthy diet, you're drinking alcohol, so drinking alcohol is one of those. So drinking alcohol is one of those that unfortunately the general public aren't aware still that there is a risk associated. There is, there is a link to cancer. So that's one that needs to be worked upon. And then going to the top, you've got your healthy weight and being smoke free. But what we imagine is that being a healthy weight will almost overtake being smoke free as as smoking incidence is decreasing, obesity and being overweight is increasing. So that could potentially overtake. And when we look at it from a mental health point of view and the significance that being smoke free, let's say, plays a part. In the East Midlands, the general population over 18, only about 14.5% of the general population are smoking. But in the East Midlands, again, those who are depressed or have anxiety, it increases to 26% to take part in smoke. And then those with a serious mental illness, it dramatically increases to 40.1%. So it has significant implications on those with mental health illnesses. So yeah, so like I mentioned, in the UK, smoking rates among adults with depression are about twice as high. And among adults with depression, sorry, let me say that again. So in the UK, smoking rates among adults with depression are about twice as high among adults without depression. People with smoke, people with depression have particular difficulty when they try to stop smoking will have and have more severe withdrawal symptoms during attempts to give, to give up. Most people start to smoke, start, most people start to smoke before they show signs of depression. So it's really unclear whether smoking leads to depression. Depression encourages people to start smoking. But the most likely explanation is that there is a complex relationship between the two. And then when we look at Leicestershire. I'll just admit. So when we look at Leicestershire and cancer prevention, there were some projections done. And in 2016, there were 3,818 incidences of cancer in Leicestershire. And of those, 1,376 cancers are considered to be preventable. So that's 36% of that population that could have been prevented through modifiable risk factors, with making changes. And then in terms of having a projection of what we might possibly predict in the future. So in 2035, we see a massive increase in lung cancer incidence cases. So a 30% increase from 2016 to 2035 of lung cancer, lung cancer incidences. A 27% increase in breast cancer. And what it means overall is a, an increased cohort of 981 additional cancers. And so that's a total growth of 32%. So the biggest increases we see obviously here are breast, bowel and lung, which are the most numerous. And but saying that tobacco is still the biggest contributor to preventable cancers. And then the size of the price, how many cancer cases could we prevent by? By 2035. And you can see here that the lung cancer and the bowel cancer cases are the ones that we can have the biggest impact on. And so the most, most amount of cancers we can prevent are in those individuals there. And so in terms of costs, preventable cancers in Leicestershire cost the NHS approximately 53.8 million pounds in 2016. And now this is projected to increase by, increase to 116.9 million in 2035. And then when you look at tobacco as well, it costs the NHS 21.2 million. But it, that would be projected to increase to 46.1 million in 2035. So really, in terms of where we should be focusing our efforts, not only from a public health point of view, but the wider spectrum. Tobacco is by far the biggest cause of preventable cancers in Leicestershire. Closely followed by excess weight. So focusing our efforts within tobacco and reducing obesity and especially childhood obesity as well should be where we focus our energies. So in terms of what you can do as in your roles. Certainly take advantage of the Public Health Services Directory. We've got some fantastic services in there that you can promote to your service users, to your general population as well. So like Connor mentioned, the Stop Smoking Service, they offer a digital platform. So they were already ahead of the game when it comes to Corona. But then also participating in annual campaigns. So we've got Stop October, which just happened. So that's one of our largest, one of the Public Health England's largest campaigns to encourage people to stop smoking. But there are numerous other campaigns out there that you, you could participate in. But then also embedding MEC and having healthy conversations with with your service users or encouraging individuals to participate in the MEC programme as well would be a definite advantage. So yeah, and that's me. Thank you very much for listening. I'm happy to take any questions. If I can't answer your questions, I'll certainly get back to you. We did have some activities as well planned here, but mine weren't as vigorous as now. So I was going to propose some desk exercises that you could do at your desk.
Thanks for that, Shere. Again, there has been a couple of questions that have come through. And I had one where you, I don't know if you could go back a couple of slides, if that's okay. Just when you're talking about the incidence of cancer and what it's going to be in 2035. Are those figures per 100k or is that, is that true data? What, what are you showing there?
Again, these are just projections. So this is just crude numbers. So it's not 100k, it's individual cases that. So like you see for lung, it will increase from 409 cases to 532 cases.
And is that for LLL or is that nationally?
So that's Leicestershire.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that. And John has a question that's in the chat. In addition to stop smoking, what are the other evidence based interventions that would work with reducing the risk of lung cancer?
So other, so second hand smoke especially for, for smoking. So the bit, one of the biggest risk factors, one of the biggest contributing factors to lung cancer is smoking. And that, that link is, is that, and we know it's evidence as well. But then that goes in hand in hand with second hand smoke as well. So a number of years ago, it was banned to smoke in the car when there's a child present. And there's also some campaigns around stepping out to smoke as well, so not, not being in the household and smoking. But John, let me get back to you with some other answers. Unfortunately, I'm not the expert on cancer. But I will definitely get back to you.
I'm not sure if you can see the chat as well, Shere. There's a question from Hannah. Do we know of older adults or more, that are more or less likely to go for cancer screening? And are invited more regularly because of that?
Yes. So the cancer screening programmes obviously exist. There's three cancer screening programmes. I should have had this in my questions. There are three cancer screening programmes, it's breast, bowel and cervical. A lot of people think that prostate is a screening programme as well. Unfortunately, it's not. It's the, the evidence isn't that it suggests it needs to become a screening programme. But in terms of breast balance, cervical, you're invited at different ages. And, and I can't remember them off the top of my head. And there is a, there is a cohort for each and they all are evidence based as well. So when you're at the increase, your highest risk of potentially having that particular cancer. So bowel screening starts at 60, finishes at 75, 74. And that's, the evidence suggests that that's when you are at your most, you increase risk of bowel cancer. And there is some work to suggest that with the implementation of FIT, so the new testing, the new screening programme, the new screening test for bowel, it could reduce to 50. But that's still for a number of years to come. And then obviously you've got your cervical screening programme, which you've got your younger cohort and your older cohort. And that's one of our biggest challenges really within public health is to encourage uptake for screening programmes. And certainly Leicester City is one of the poorest for bowel screening. So that there is some work doing, that we'll be doing there to try and increase it for Leicester City. But that's not to say that the county aren't doing fantastic or doing too well either. So there is work to do in trying to increase screening uptake. I'm hoping that's answered your question. But if not, I can definitely get back to you, Hannah.
No, thank you, Shere. What I'm going to do now is just share my screen so I can put my slides up. So bear with us one second. You'll be pleased to know I don't have any videos. So it should be fairly smooth. Okay. Yeah, thanks again, Shere. Really looking forward to seeing how that, that works develops. And cancer prevention specifically is new to, to public health and how we work. Obviously, for some time, we've, we've worked on the wider determinants, like you mentioned, those changeable and modifiable behaviours. But working on cancer specifically is new. So we're looking forward to seeing how that develops. And the sort of my mini session is focused on suicide prevention, something that I've been working on for a while now and quite passionate about. So hopefully if we can have a bit of an overview of the national context, we'll then look at what we're doing locally that's, that's steered by that national context, talk a bit about the, the local campaign that we run. And then about the Tomorrow Project and possibly about some other pieces of work that we're hoping to develop shortly. And what I usually do when speaking about suicide prevention to groups like this, that a lot of people may not be working in suicide and not come across it often and not sort of understand the, the language around it and why we use and say what we do. So I find it is useful just to have a think about the language and really, sorry, we've got chats coming in, be thoughtful about the, the sort of language that we're using. Because it can be potentially quite upsetting and sometimes offensive for people if we do use that potentially out of date language. So things like a committed suicide, really the sort of language and how we talk about that now is much more a person that's died by suicide or took their own life. And we find that suicide is a cause of death and it needs to be treated as such. So you, when we use the word commit, which is probably more what we did in sort of 70s and 80s, it's, it's quite stigmatising and that's sort of outdated language now that, that still has that quotations of illegality and shame. So where we can, if we use died by suicide, that would be the preferred language. And likewise with a self harmer, the preferred term would be a person who self harms. And just thinking about that people first language and that recognises and values the person rather than the sort of self harm may be a way in which they cope. But it's not necessarily who that person is. So it would be a person who self harms, which is the preferred language. And then failed suicide, preferred language that we'd use is a suicide attempt. And just because any attempt should be taken seriously and we need to recognise that the distress that that causes and provide the appropriate and timely support and sort of any notion of failure doesn't really help that. So that, just, just to sort of go over, just so people are conscious and mindful of the, of the type of language that we use. And I will try and keep up with the chat. I'm not sure whether it's for me or for somebody else. Okay. And, and because we are talking about suicide, it can be potentially upsetting topic for some of you in the group. So if it is, you're more than welcome to leave and come back if you feel you need to. And I'm happy to have a chat with you at the end, if you'd like to talk about anything in any more depth. And right. So yeah, just to have an overview of the national context then, just so that sort of shapes the, the sort of context for why we do things locally. What I wanted to do is, is try and make this a bit interactive, which is difficult when we're talking about suicide, but I will do my best. So the latest data that we have available from the ONS in 2019 shows that we had 5,691 deaths recorded by a suicide. So with that then, how many of those deaths do you think were men? Just to throw that out to the group, if you want to put that on the chat or shout at me. Okay. So we're going for the, the sort of upper ends. We've got some 75, 60, 80, 70, 75. Yeah. So you, you're all in that sort of ballpark. It's approximately three quarters of the deaths, so 75% are, are men. And just as a bit of a follow up, why do you think, why do you think that is? Why do you think it's 75% of men and fewer women take their own life? Yeah. So straight away Andrew, yeah, men don't talk. Less likely to discuss their mental health. Yeah, they're subject to stigma. The old fashioned values of men being their provider, hide it, when access health services, stigma around men not talking. Yeah, that's a good point, Hannah. Women potentially feel like they're more needed. Is that that primary caregiver perhaps? Societal pressures, men seen as the strong ones, less likely to seek help. Yeah, it sounds like I could probably just stop this session now. I think you all know what, what you're talking about and they're, they're all right. Of course they are. And yeah, we definitely know that men are much less likely to access help and access it early. Whereas we know that women are much more health seeking in their behaviour. But it is very complex in why people take their own life and it's not ever one singular reason. It's normally a combination of those. So we know that we've had over 5,000 deaths last year, 75% of them are men. So if you think about a five year age band, so let's say five to 10 years or 75 to 80, which do you think age band, do you see the most, most deaths by suicide? Okay, going for the slightly younger, 50 is 20 to 40, 25 to 35. Okay. So there's a couple of right answers in there. And it seems some of them, one person's gone over 70, interesting. And a lot of you go for that younger age group. Again, a bit of a follow up question. What, what's your sort of rationale and sort of reasoning why it might be younger groups? Unemployment, okay. Work pressures, financial pressures, social media, more pressure on young people to live perfect lives. Parenting from social media, specific pressure on young people, financial. Okay, lots of financial and sort of unemployment concerns, society pressures, young men to be something that they might not be real. Loneliness, that's a very good point, loneliness, less opportunities. Okay, no, that's interesting. And they're, they're all correct answers. Actually, where we see the most, most deaths, sorry, in the, in the age bands are 40 to 45. And particularly men, that is, it's very high in that age, in that age bracket. So to throw that back to you, why, for some of you that said those lower age groups, are you shocked at that or? Or what you, what, why do you think that might be the case that, that those 40 to 40 year old, five year olds are seeing that sort of peak in death by suicide? And this is, this is national data. To answer Mel's question. Yep. Midlife crises, divorce, marriage breakups. You've got to say we might think I've not got to go anywhere. I thought it should be, we're younger men, I haven't. Just trying to keep, but they're coming through quite quickly. Yeah, we probably find that younger men, there, there is a slightly different sort of culture with, with the younger men coming through. They probably are more, more willing and open to talk than what the, their, their dads and grandparents would have been. Children leaving home. Yeah. So these are really all really good things. And you think about when somebody gets to that age 40, 45, there's been a lot of commitment with, with work, with any relationships they might be in. Children are getting older, perhaps going off to uni or leaving home. That sort of emptiness syndrome kicks in. And women feel like they're more needed by their families, perhaps when at that stage, when they're, no, no one needs me. Yeah. And we find that then, and when you get to 45, that's where the, because of that long term commitment. And then if things probably aren't the way that you probably envisaged when you were younger, or you haven't quite met your goals or, and things like that, that can all contribute to that increasing level of risk. And we find that in. And we find that in heterosexual relations as well with men and women, that men often rely on the women to meet their emotional needs. And if that, they split up, if there's a divorce, that then, the only source of comfort, of sharing, of providing that emotional need is taken away. That can leave men quite vulnerable. Has that age changed as we're getting married later, buying houses later? And honestly, I'm not sure, John. It's been, we see the most risk in that sort of 40 to 55 really is where the most risk in the the prevalence of death by suicide is highest. It will be interesting over the course of 10, 15, 20 years to see how that changes. And you're right, things are starting to happen later now, people having children later. They're probably starting careers a bit later. So it will be interesting to see how that develops, but I don't have an answer. If something goes wrong financially, they feel like they've failed at what they think is their number one purpose for their family. Yeah, it's all those sort of feelings of not being good and not being worthy. And things that sort of question perhaps their ego and that, that sort of mentality of being a provider can all throw into that sort of confusion. So yeah, no interest in that. That was a really good, still coming through debt and losing a job. Yeah. So these are all contributing factors to that element of risk around mental distress and yeah, early death by suicide. And what I'm going to do now, I've got a final question. I want to try and copy it because it's a bit of a wordy one, so it may help if it's in the chat. I don't know if it's going to let me copy. So I'll do my best to explain the question. So the rate of suicide has increased to record levels in 2019 sadly, for which group of people? So is this males aged 10 to 24, or is it females aged 30 to 44, or females aged 10 to 24? In which age group do we think we're seeing the sort of fastest rates increase and which is actually at record levels at the moment? Okay, so you're going for that younger one. Yeah, so well, it's a bit of a trick question. Both males and females are increasing in that age group. Actually, we're seeing a much quicker and steeper incline in the females aged 10 to 24. And young women, young girls at the highest recorded rates ever for suicide at the moment. But what we need to remember is that those rates are relatively low compared to the men that are aged 40 to 45. So off the top of my head, I think it's something like three and a half per hundred thousand for the young females. Whereas men in those highest-risk groups, I think it's around 30 to 40 per hundred thousand. So, but it is increasing. It's something that we need to pay close attention to in that sort of prevention element. So all of this data that we're spoken about in the national context is all available on the ONS Suicide in England and Wales. And they're the 2019 registrations and they're all coronial verdicts that are decided by coroners that record the deaths. And so the national policy, so in January 2019, the government published its first cross-government suicide prevention plan. So across the parties, the plan has a focus on how social media and the latest technology, such as predictive analytics and artificial intelligence can identify those most at risk of suicide. And both of those things, the predictive analytics and artificial intelligence are probably some way off. It's still quite early. So we probably won't be using that locally for some time, I imagine, because it's not particularly reliable right now. Hannah, have a point on that phrase. Yeah, of course. And if you remember that point, we'll come back to it at the end. Do we have anything around the latest figures, trends given for COVID? We can talk about that in a minute, Mel, with the RTS stuff. So going back to the, sorry, the national policy. So the plan also sets out actions for local government, the NHS and the criminal justice system. But yeah, I won't go into it too much detail, but generally, the policy and guidance set in this document does guard a lot of the local delivery that we do. So on to that local activity and suicide prevention. Just what I'll cover in this little section here is a summary of the local data. So we're just in the national, we'll look at the local, see how we differ. A bit on our suicide audit prevention group, talk about the strategy, the real-time surveillance, which is very, very useful and something that we're relying heavily, that really steers a lot of our work and a lot of our reactive work to help prevent suicide. I'll speak a bit about the Tomorrow Project and then some of the small task and finish groups that prop up to help support our delivery. So a summary then of the local data. This, the most recent data is available and it's published in a sort of easy read format on the PHE fingertips. And this is again from the ONS data. But due to the relatively low numbers and fluctuations in the data, it's usually prevented as an average of three years worth of data. So death by suicide for all persons in Leicester is 8.1 hundred thousand and in Leicestershire it's very similar, 7.9. In Rutland, there isn't any populational level data just because of the small numbers that are involved. It's not possible to have any sort of meaningful conclusions in Rutland. But we do get much richer data from our RTS, which I'll go on to talk about in a minute. The SAPG, the Suicide Audit and Prevention Group. So this is a group of stakeholders and agencies that combine their efforts really to reduce death by suicide and to support those that are bereaved by suicide. And our partners share the common belief that each death by suicide is preventable. The group is responsible for designing and delivering the local suicide prevention strategy, which we have just done very recently, that I can share with you after this, and report into the Health and Wellbeing Boards. And you'll see on the slide that some of the partners are listed there, there are a few more, so that slide probably needs a bit of an update. The SAPG is responsible then for developing and shaping the ALR strategy, the suicide prevention strategy. So this new strategic approach for suicide prevention was published in the last couple of months at the Start a Conversation conference in September. And we've identified the key local priorities over the next three years up until 2023 and will focus on supporting the national strategic aims. So locally, we've set out nine priorities. Just have a quick review of those. They are to target support at key high-risk groups, to support primary care in its suicide prevention role, preventing suicide in public places, protecting people with a history of self-harm, engage with corporate and business sectors to enhance their efforts in preventing suicide, to support the provision of enhanced suicide awareness training, supporting local media, so including social media, to deliver key messages about suicide prevention and awareness, to raise awareness by using our real-time surveillance data, which we're working on at the moment, and to work with key partners to provide a coordinated mental wellbeing approach to response and recovery following COVID-19. So we have been working on this strategy for some time and obviously COVID came into the mix, sort of February, March time. So we did have to adapt our strategy slightly because that is, that is really important. It is going to have a lasting effect on people's mental health and wellbeing and potentially suicide rates locally as well and nationally. So just seeing your question there, John. Yeah, so this is on one slide. I can share notes afterwards if, because I appreciate there's a lot of me talking over one slide. So apologies for that, but yeah, I will share what I'm talking about after, if it's not clear. Moving on to the real-time surveillance. So yeah, it would be closer impossible to be able to deliver on the majority of those nine priorities that I've just read out if we didn't have the support of the real-time surveillance system, which is delivered by Leicestershire Police and reported to the group, the SAPG. And so the RTS, it's a system the police use to capture demographic and related data when attending Gen 19, which is sudden death incidence, where death by suicide is suspected. So what we need to appreciate with the RTS is that all deaths by suicide are decided by the coroner. But what we do with the police is attend those Gen 19 or sudden death incidents where it's highly likely that the death is by suicide. But we should recognise that that's not confirmed. The data collected gives an insight into that person's history, their mental health contacts, status of housing, education, employment and so on. We do get a really good wealth of data from the RTS. And it just gives a much richer picture of how we may have prevented the death from occurring or how we can learn from it to prevent future deaths. Like I said, the RTS is really important for that early intervention. And we know this because 65% of people are more likely to attempt suicide after a friend or family member dies by suicide. So when somebody becomes bereaved by suicide, they're 65% more likely. And 80% of those bereaved by suicide are more likely to drop out of work or education. So it does have a profound and lasting effect on people that experience death by suicide and are bereaved by suicide, sorry. Which brings us on to the Tomorrow Project. So as I mentioned, the RTS are one of our key partners in the referral pathway to the Tomorrow Project. And the Tomorrow Project is a jointly-commissioned service for LRR, so Leicestershire and Rutland wide, and is available to anybody who needs support after being bereaved by suicide or if they have been affected by a suicide attempt. And this can be historical or very recent, the service there and they're ready and available to work with you if need be. So when the police attend a sudden death incident and it is suspected suicide, the trained officer will discuss this with the family or those affected and will recommend referral to the bereavement service. There's a range of services offered and if support is declined initially, and sometimes it is, because it is obviously very shocking and it takes people a while to come to terms with what's actually happened. So the officer will always check back in with the family in the next couple of days and one month later if there's still been a decline of that service. And what we find is that often the support is taken up later. People are also able to self-refer to the Tomorrow Project as well. And I'll be able to share a link with you that after this, after this presentation. It's on the Start a Conversation campaign as well, which we'll share with you in a moment. And I've just seen a bullet point that reminds me. The Tomorrow Project as well, it does have a training element as part of their work. So a lot of their work is therapeutic, working with people. But we do procure training through the Tomorrow Project for professionals in the public that would like to know a bit more about suicide bereavement. And I think we may have one in a few days' time. So again, I'll share the details of that after this session. Okay, so the Start a Conversation, this is our local suicide prevention campaign. Hopefully you've seen it. If not, not to worry. The, yeah, so the Start a Conversation is our suicide prevention campaign that's delivered by the SAPG. And the main aims of the campaign is to build a community that's really committed to literally starting a conversation about suicide. We know that if we have earlier, open and honest conversations about how we're feeling, it can potentially save lives. We recognise that it's not, that not everybody's an expert. And we sort of spoke about that in the Met Brief as well, not everybody is going to be an expert. But we have got a resource that does help. So for anybody that is struggling with coping, might be having suicidal thoughts, this is the sort of go-to resource which points out the sort of advice and support and local and national offers that are available to people. As you go through the website, then you can see there, there's obviously the buttons at the top. So if you just move along to the advice and support section, there's lots on there. And often we find that there's loads of great services and resources out there for people to use, but people, for one reason, another, just aren't aware of them or they aren't promoted widely enough or in the right places or sort of by the right means and they go and they're just missed. So what we wanted to do is just to bring everything back together in one place and collate that local and national sort of platform really, just to make everything easier to access. And this really does support the work of the SAPG. Training and events. So yeah, the Start a Conversation campaign, we procure select training each year that aligns with our suicide prevention strategy. We are coming to the end of the training round for this year. Although there is, as I mentioned, I think there is one still to go on suicide bereavement training delivered by the Tomorrow Project Harmless, who are the provider of that service. And that is free to LRR residents, so I definitely will share that with you at the end of this. And I think it may be on the website as well for you to book on. You're also welcome to have a look at the, and share the other training resources that we've got listed on the website. So some of you may be familiar with the Zero Suicidal Lines training. I think this has been delivered to sort of 1.5 million people now across England and Wales. So that is becoming really well-known and it is a really good sort of bite-sized training and introduction to suicide awareness and how to have more effectively those healthy conversations that are going to help people much sooner before that crisis point is reached. And there's also the PHE psychological first day training that's been added to the website as well. So you're more than welcome to have a look at that. Just to go into a bit more detail about the Tomorrow Project, I've mentioned it briefly. So the Tomorrow Project is the confidential suicide bereavement service set up by Harmless and now funded in LRR to support individuals and communities that have been affected by suicide. So just trying to catch up on the, I'll come to those after. Yeah, so with the Tomorrow Project, there aren't actually too many specialist services like this in the country. So at LRR, I think it's really great work that we're doing in commissioning that service. And I think we have just then renewed the contract, so the Tomorrow Project should be here to stay for some time. But they are slowly becoming more readily available. And we know that we've sort of went over briefly before, that there is a strong link to people that have experienced loved ones that have died by suicide and then becoming at risk themselves. Having a specialist suicide bereavement counselling service is so important for our suicide prevention agenda in LRR. When somebody takes their own life, it's thought to directly affect at least eight people around that person and indirectly affect over 70 people. So if you do become a person that's bereaved by suicide, you're around 1.6 times more likely to suicide yourself. And this is published data in the BMJ, so really credible data that we're reporting there. Which is quite worrying as well to be 1.6 times more likely to attempt to take your own life after being bereaved. So that's why the service is really important and does a lot of good work in helping people. So if you know or somebody or yourself has been affected by suicide in some way, and like I said, whether it's recent or historical and you would like support or they would like support to manage their grief and just for an extra bit of help, please do signpost with the Tomorrow Project. You can self-refer direct on their website or on the referral form on the Start a Conversation website. And IAPP and primary care are well aware of the service now too and have been referring for some time. Okay, so next steps for 2021. Yeah, so there are nine key priorities that we'll continue to work on to help reduce death by suicide in LRR. There are four projects at the moment that I'm actively working on to develop. So I'm looking at working on a self-harm support service locally. We know that since COVID particularly, the rate of self-harm is increasing in young people, in adults as well. And there isn't, probably isn't quite the service that people want and need in place at the moment. So we're looking to address that, but it is a challenge and it's probably going to take some time as well. Likewise, with men's mental health, so to think about since lockdown, since COVID started, those protective factors have been somewhat limited by COVID. So if you think about that opportunistic intervention, where men might usually go to sports clubs, the gyms, go running, go to the pub, just see people outside of their family, outside of their close networks. They're given that opportunity to offload concerns, worries. A lot of that has been taken away and people are becoming quite isolated and lonely without having that that sort of network available to them, which might usually give that early support. So we're looking into that and potentially trying to follow a model that Derbyshire have done with commissioning mental health support, men, sorry, men's mental health support groups, which is working brilliantly over there. We want to continue supporting GPs in primary care, which has been identified in the strategy. We know that around 75% of people who take their own life were in contact with their GP in the year prior to their death and around 50% in contact less than six months. So we do want to support GPs to have that meaningful empathetic conversations with people in distress and to co-produce safety plans with their patients, which has been shown to reduce the risk of suicide. Many already do that, which is brilliant, but we know that we do need to strengthen what is effectively the frontline for suicide prevention. So there, some of the things that I'm working on at the moment, or trying to do at least. For those of you on the call that perhaps have an interest or any ideas, what are your thoughts on? For those of you on the call that perhaps have an interest or any ideas, what are your thoughts on where we should go locally? Do you have any ideas of what is needed or what might be the missing link in suicide prevention? So there's a few questions on there already that I'll try and come back to. Is there going to be a link with the social prescribers? I would imagine so, yes. Social prescribers are fairly new to the department. I think they came in probably six months ago actually, to be fair. So we will be strengthening our links with those as we will be with the recovery workers and the lack officers in the county and city.
Hi Connor, it's Jo Spicks. Again, I think I put something in the chat, but I think certainly men access a lot of sports clubs. And it's whether we could do any work around making sure that our sports clubs are aware of all the resources and do a bit of a targeted campaign. It's perhaps one of those safe environments where men in particular feel that they can talk to their their peers and how it probably links to healthy conversations as well, Mel, how we can encourage them to have those conversations in that safe environment, but where they know to signpost to, if that makes sense.
Absolutely, yeah. And I'm glad you've mentioned that actually. And that is something that I've been trying to do for some time. Just before lockdown, we did establish a link with the Leicester Speedway to have a sort of, to really embed our resources of Stod Conversation into the stadium, onto their leaflets, handouts for supporters, things like that. And that kick-started then what we're trying to do with football clubs. So the first one that we've reached out to has been Little With Athletic. Had a personal contact there that I knew had been struggling himself some years ago. So we've reached out and sort of see if we could establish that link, that partnership. And they were really receptive of the idea and had a really good call with one of their sort of chairs of the board at the club. And they've been really proactive in supporting the campaign. And we have established a sponsorship opportunity with them, which we probably will be looking to do elsewhere. Really to embed the Stod Conversation branding and website into communities. And like you say, that is that safe space for young men, young girls as well, to have conversations around how they're feeling. It doesn't necessarily have to be suicide. That's often the endpoint when those preventive measures have probably been missed. So we do want to go in there and help shape how clubs interact with their members, their communities. And I know when I was a lot younger playing football, these were conversations that we were having as young guys. And sadly, I know that in Leicestershire in the past couple of years, there have been some young lads that have taken their own life. So this is definitely something that we're keen to work with and I'm sure you could help us there. So I'll probably be coming back.
Happy to have a conversation with you Connor, outside and you as well, Mel probably.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so there's talks of obviously, it's, you know, healthy conversations. It links through, it links through all of this to be fair. So, but I know there's been discussions around sort of working with some of the sports clubs. It's sort of finding a way where we don't bombard sports clubs as well and sort of how it all links, all links together, if that makes sense. So, and as you said Connor, sometimes it's actually the suicide kind of is like the end. There's points that happen before, you know, in terms of, you know, which may be preventable or, you know, things like that. The only thing I was going to say, and it was on Tim Merton, but Rowena has actually written with it, it's around sort of Lamp and linking in with those guys. The only reason I mention is because I linked in with Lamp with the We Are Undefeatable programme. It wasn't with Rowena, it was probably a colleague of yours when I worked with LRS. So I know they, you know, around their mental health conditions and stuff that they do, but you beat me to it.
Yeah, and Rowena, I think you'd maybe use, but if we extend that invite to you to the Suicide Order Prevention Group, we have one at the moment, it's once weekly. It used to be quarterly, but in response to Covid and the challenges that that's faced, we've done it weekly now to be much more reactive. So we'll have on next Wednesday, I'll extend the invite to you. You're more than welcome to attend. But yeah, it would be really good to hear about more of the work that you're doing and see how we can link in as a group for that. I'm just scrolling back up. So I know there's, I think there's like a few questions there that I've missed. I think early on Hannah, you said that you have a point you'd like to raise for discussion if there's any time at the end.
Yeah.
With the time.
Yeah, so what I was gonna say, so this is kind of really just my opinion rather than anything that's necessarily, you know, based in any research or anything. I haven't really properly looked into it. But I do have the view that this kind of narrative, that the reason that men are, like have the higher suicide rates is kind of all about because they don't talk or because they're trying to be strong or whatever. I feel like that's just a really, really unhelpful narrative, just for everyone really. I mean, I think it's a bit unhelpful for women because it kind of indicates that women always do talk. Therefore, if women aren't opening up about problems, it's because they don't have any. But also I kind of feel like it puts the onus on men to kind of get over themselves and talk rather than kind of dealing with any of the issues behind why they feel that way or why they feel that suicide is their only way out. And I think it kind of ignores the fact that men do talk, they do have, like they do kind of hint at things in their own way. But often they kind of raise their issues maybe in a jokey way. And I think it maybe just takes people picking up on that a little bit more as well, like. Like for example, like we kind of, it's kind of almost become like a cultural narrative that, oh, we don't, we don't laugh at women about their weight, but men seem to be kind of fair game for that. And you find that men often will bring that up as a joke themselves for, you know, people to laugh about and things so that maybe they feel in on the joke. But maybe in a lot of cases, things are really insecurities and maybe they're bringing it up as a joke to kind of reach out for help a little bit. Like there's just been so many times where I've been sat in a consultation room with a referral that's male and he'll kind of bring something up. There's actually quite a serious matter, but he will bring it up in a jokey way. And I kind of always just approach it like, that's not funny what's happened to you. Like that's a really serious thing and you can feel about that. And it's kind of from that point where, yeah, it does stop being a joke and it does become a real conversation. So I feel, I just kind of feel like when we say that men don't talk about things, it kind of doesn't really help because we're ignoring their cues and we're ignoring the times where they do talk about things. And also like as you mentioned earlier, in a lot of relationships, whether it's friendships or relationships between men and women, men will talk to their female partner. So they do talk about things. But then, like even me, like when I've been friends with men for like a few weeks, they'll talk about stuff, but then you ask if, you know, any of their guy mates relate and they'll say, oh no, we don't, we don't have those conversations. So maybe it's kind of about reframing that as, you know, you can take the lead and you can be the person to change the culture of your friend group and, you know, initiate that, that, that conversation.
Yeah, no, I have to agree with you. And when we're talking about things in this webinar at least, it's that generalisation that we have to do because we're talking about populational level. But yeah, I do agree with you that there will be subtle differences. But what we should appreciate as well, that societal and cultural changes do take a long time to happen. And what we're trying to do in public health is to shape that in a positive way into encourage men to be more open and receptive to seeking early help. And we know it's just a matter of fact that men seek help less and seek help later. And when you think about that in the mental health context, that's only with the increase of risk. So if you allow things to develop and to bubble up and get worse, often it can be, it can be too late and you can find yourself reaching that crisis point.
Yeah, definitely.
Again, there's that generalisation that women may tend to speak about things a lot sooner and have that earlier intervention. So we found that the psychological wellbeing services at I A P S, there's a bigger proportion of women that access that service and that's for that lower and mild to moderate really help. So if we can steer men and encourage men to talk about it sooner. And yeah, with their friendship groups as well, we find that there is a slow transition. You find on social media as well that there are lots more men now than what there was 40 years ago that are talking about mental health, which is great. But I think you're right, we are, it's a difficult subject to approach, it's complex. And it's going to be slow to have that transition. But that's something that we are working on and we hope we'll get better, of course.
Yeah, I think it's kind of like what you say about them seeking it later. It's kind of like, it's all fun and jokes and it's all things that we can laugh at until it's not. Like even the other day, I was watching like a documentary about families that got puppies over lockdown. And one of the men on it, he was like absolutely terrified of this dog, really genuinely, obviously had a phobia. And everyone was just laughing. Everyone just thought it was the funniest thing because it was a tiny little dog and this grown man was terrified of it. But I think it's, again, it is just one of those things of, it's kind of fair game to laugh about men sometimes when really it's like, actually no, this isn't funny because you're actually like, let's take this seriously. Let's not just, it's not all just some big joke until it gets to the point where you feel that, you know, you have to hurt yourself or suicide is the only way sort of thing.
I think it comes back to that narrative, doesn't it, of we're protective of that male ego. Men are typically the strong one, the provider. And I think we are still clinging on to that ideology somewhat. So until that changes, I think we'll still have those views. But we do see a slow transition and shift in that way of thinking. So hopefully as we move forward, it will get better. But yeah, good point, good question. Just going back slightly, there was quite a few questions out that come through that I've missed. John, do we have indicators there for 2020 that's even worse? In, I think in January, we're probably doing a review of the past nine months of our RTS data. So we'll be able to see locally whether that's been the case or not. Nationally, there's an N KISH report, which is the National Confidential Inquiry into Suicide and something else that I should know. They've reported that there hasn't been an increase, not least a statistically significant increase compared to this time last year, which is interesting. But again, that's only at that national level. So it'd be interesting for us to see locally how we compare. I know just from going through the groups that we are seeing, we're seeing more suicides each week. Previously, we might have seen one or two a week. We're doubling that each week at the moment, but we will have a review of that, I'm sure you'll get to see. Just scrolling down to four more. Do we have anything around latest figures, trends for Covid? Hopefully that just answered your question there, Mel. Other slides that we should be seeing? No, but I will bear that in mind that I need to make use of more slides. So sorry about that. We don't do this often. Rowena, you asked about can it be accessed by anyone nationally? Are you referring to the Tomorrow Project there?
Yes, I was actually, yes, yeah.
You know what, I don't have an answer for you, but I know in L L R, of course we commission it for L L R, but Harmless are the charity and the provider of the Tomorrow Project. They operate primarily in Derbyshire, Nottinghamshire and now Leicestershire. I'm pretty confident their self-harm service is national, but I'm not sure if the Tomorrow Project is national. I think it might be for areas that fund the service.
Right. Speaking on behalf of someone who was bereaved by suicide in Rutland.
Yeah.
At least, I just wondered that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so definitely for anybody in L L R, it's free to access.
Okay, right, okay, great.
Bryony, you have a handful of leaf that's in the office. We've used workplace events, but we're good to have more. Yeah, we can get you some more on the post, we've got lots. Yeah, I think, yeah, so I'm just catching up on the questions, everybody. So this is a bit slow and boring. I thought, yeah, I'm trying to get down to answer everybody's. We'll link in with Lamp definitely. B, what age range? Sorry, go, I see your hand, Rowena.
Just want something. The reason asking about whether that person can access the services. If the person that died by suicide was down in the London area, but the person who was bereaved by it is in this area, is that okay? Or does it depend where the person died, if that makes sense?
I don't, yeah, I don't, I'm pretty confident there wouldn't be too pressures about it either. If some support and they have capacity to help, I'm sure they would. But to answer your question, yes, if somebody dies in a different area, but the person that's related to them is in L L R, definitely.
Okay, that's fine, sorry.
That's okay. B, what age range are you looking to start with in relation to Self-Harm Project? That is a difficult question for now. We're still developing the idea and we're in a consultation period with people. I'm sure your service will be called into that at some point as it develops. It is very early stages, but something that I'm quite passionate about and something that I feel is an urgent need to have as a community-based offer, which is quite limited at the moment. So we could potentially have that conversation offline. Agree with Rowena, I think it's how we encourage people to respond when they hear the comments in the appropriate way, yeah. Not blaming them for not opening up, of course. Okay, so I hope that answered some of your questions that have come through. And if you have any more questions, put them in the chat, shout out. Or if you're not wanting to ask them in the group, you're more than welcome to email me. I think we should have our emails on these slides somewhere. Or just give me a call, I'm happy to have a chat with you at any point. We have come to the end of our webinar now, but I'll open it back up to the group for questions with Mel and Shirag if anybody has any. Yeah, thank you very much for your time. Thanks Rowena, save that.
Thanks Connor. Can we just flick to the last slide? There's just a few bits from LRS if.
Sure, sorry.
To finish up with, thank you. So just a thank you from LRS for attending the workshop today. And a big thank you to Connor, Mel and Shirag for presenting. Hopefully that's given you a bit of an insight into some of the projects delivered by the Health Improvement Team at L T C. So we'll stop the recording now and a copy of that will be available on our website over the coming days. So do head over there if you want to catch up on any of the conversations that have been had today. But there's also recordings on there from all the other conference workshops that have taken place over the last few weeks. So if you've got any that you want to catch up on, then head over there to take a look. You will get sent a link to an evaluation survey following the workshop today. So do spend a few minutes completing that so that it can help us to take your feedback forwards for any future events. And finally, we're looking to set up a mental health, sport and physical activity network. So if you're interested in coming to the workshop on the 30th of November to find out a little bit more about this, fill out the relevant section in the evaluation form when you come to complete that or email one of us at LRS to find out a little bit more. Thank you again for attending this morning and I hope you all have a good rest of your day.